Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Being 7:30, I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Board to order Thursday, May 30, 2019. And first on the agenda is to meet with Prime Engineering regarding an A and R supplemental for Susan Lane. Yes.
Chairman, can you help to... Do we want to tilt it like that? No, go to the microphone. Mr. Chairman, Evan Watson from Prime Engineering. Today we're presenting a Form A plan or an approval not required. Susan Lane is probably known as the Grover Sankey. We'll sign out in front of this property, you know, mowed for sale at Susan Lane right off of Highland Road just before Route 140. And all we're doing is an existing dwelling on the house, on the property, and we are dividing the property into two lots so that the house is on its own lot with a well, it's a septic system. We have the, all the wetlands delineated, so the wetlands you see here, it's actually on a proof order of resource area delineation we got a few years ago, so what you see here are actual resource areas. So if you look at the minimum area requirements, the upland area requirements, the frontage, it's all there for both lots, one and two. There's no proposed roadway here, so again, both lots have adequate area and frontage, adequate 160-foot diameter zoning circle. So I would request that the board consider this not a subdivision, you know, given its endorsements.
Then ask them?
Yeah, entertain any questions.
Okay. The, one's a comment. The zoning circle is a new way, is a new thing for us. You used to call it an up, a...
Upland circle.
Upland circle, but now it's a zoning circle. It's still though, and this is more of the building department purview rather than ours, but the zoning circle is supposed to touch the frontage line.
Oh, I see.
As before, not, you only missed it by 15 feet, but it's...
It can clearly touch.
But for, of course it could. Of course it easily could.
And we go for, just one thing to mention that under the endorsements, the planning board shall not be construed as an approval of the form of the zoning.
And everyone's putting that on nowadays and we...
Yeah, it's a requirement in the Mass General.
Absolutely. Now, the other one is, is the 200-foot riverfront line.
Yes.
Showing two small dashes and a long dash, that one?
Yes.
Which, now, that's like the, the end of a zone, right? Which way is the zone? Where's the river?
Oh, okay, so, good question.
I just don't get it.
The riverfront, so there's, it's, it's a resource area under the Wetlands Protection Act. I actually, we didn't want to have that initially count as wetland area, because if you go to somebody's yard and you look at it and say, "This is a wetland resource area," you say, "Well, why? Where's the weather?"
Right.
The riverfront area is from the bank of the river to a line parallel 200 feet away. So the river is actually in the wetland over here, and it threads throughout the, inside the resource area, inside the wetland. And so that 200-foot riverfront zone is 200 feet away from the river that's inside the wetland.
I wasn't aware there was a river there.
There is, yeah.
That's the...
It's a small, small brook.
Is it?
Yeah, and it comes from the other side of Highland Road, and it actually drinks south and goes along Route 140.
Okay, so the river's on the west side of the...
Yeah, and anything really that flows throughout the year that has banks would be considered a river. You'd probably call it a brook or a stream or something, but it's afforded the same protection to Wetlands Protection Act.
I think that's a, it's kind of tributary to the, what is that brook? Holloway Brook?
It's not Fall Brook, yeah.
No, Holloway.
It ends up in Long Park.
Holloway Brook.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, it looks like it, like it runs along 140.
It does.
Yeah.
The headwaters in my backyard.
Oh, okay.
There's a pond in my backyard and that runs down into Holloway Brook. It's cool if this follows the highway, because they cut the highway and squashed the, pushed the brook in.
So you don't have that much upland area left out of this, out of this 192 square feet, there's most of it.
What's left on Lot 1 is 53,000 square feet, more or less.
Yeah.
And what's left on Lot 2 is 33.8 acres, more or less.
Yeah.
So you're right, I mean, we've been looking at different things to do with the property and the wetlands that kind of, between the wetlands and the zoning associated with wetlands, it's been a challenge, so, no plans just yet.
Bridges.
Bridges?
Bridges, that's what it...
I entertain a motion, I mean...
I, I will move to accept this as an A and R.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right here. Do you guys normally sign it, or?
Yes, we do.
Perfect.
And we have such a short night tonight that we roll.
Actually, way over, I didn't make it, realized I forgot my charm, and still glad to see that there was one already here, so we was thinking.
Kathy comes equipped.
Yeah.
You don't have your signature on these, do you?
No.
I'm pretty good at this. This is 5:30?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Thank you, Chuck.
See?
You can have some coffee back.
Thanks, I'll get that.
That's yours.
It's good.
Thank you, great service.
Oh, it's got cheese, and the rest she's like, it's pretty plain.
Right. Or smudges.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that stuff. Thank you very much. Do you need a pen, please?
Yeah, thanks. What were you showing me?
Thanks, you too. I'll see ya.
You see how this is, this is a notice to tax collector, and so when someone's going to come before ZVA, they have to have this form signed, this is their current inability to fit.
Right.
So if we are ever going to release a bond with somebody, we need to make sure this is in place as well, don't you think?
Yeah.
Number two on the agenda is to review the zoning board of appeals petitions. One for Mr. Maxey.
We should have one more of these. That's me, yes.
I'm going to make a motion to forward to ZVA with no comment, because...
On one of them, the Maxey one? That's just one that you proved...
We already saw that one, yeah. He's just changing the property from one.
I'll second that.
I'll, I'll...
You have to sign it, yeah.
Oh, you didn't have to do something.
Would they have to sign it? Here's one bag of ketchup.
Ketchup. All done. This one's complete, the one that one needs.
But these four are complete. Well, the board got an 80. You got four out of five. We got an 80 on the teness of this one.
Oh, you know what, there was only four.
Oh, then we did, then we didn't do too bad.
You did get a hundred.
We got all four right.
Does anyone want to make any comments on the Peterson?
Peterson is the second one?
Ten foot high fence.
I, I have a question, what's the, isn't there a max height for fences?
Seven feet without a permit.
Oh, seven feet without a permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or under seven feet without a permit. And seven feet triggers permit, that's I think why there.
Oh, this, there's also a setback from Bedford Street. You're not allowed to get that close to, there's, there's going to be somebody in a car parked on Nelson Shore Road trying to look upstream and looking directly at a brand-new tree.
Does it say where that first post is, Zink? Like, how far back?
If it was a subdivision, our regulations would say, and I can look it up, but it's going to take me a few minutes to get it.
It says that it's 10 feet from Nelson Shore Road.
Yeah.
But it does not say...
It's got to be held back from Bedford. That's the most important thing, because someone's going to be taking a left, left turn onto there and they want to see...
Agreed, I mean, would you comment to say a car length back, you know, 20 feet from Bedford, or longer, so you wouldn't obstruct view?
There's, there's actually a number that we use, just don't use it very often.
But they're taking the color into consideration.
The what?
Color. Fence will be tastefully done and maintained in the coloring of blend into the current surroundings.
Nice.
No losses are...
I know, I laughed.
I did? I would laugh, but this, this just doesn't come up that often.
Nelson Shore Road, isn't that, isn't this property the Lions Club?
That's what, oh, what am I, oh, I'm thinking Fuller.
Yeah, Nelson Shore, it's on Bedford, no, this is Bedford Street, Nelson Shore, oh, Nelson Shore. Okay, no, 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 no.
I think if, if you're looking at this street, isn't Sutucket Trail, like, maybe about 500?
No, that's Highland.
Oh, that's Highland, this is Bedford Street, all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, you know, Staples Shore is what I was thinking, but on, on Main Street, no, Bedford, Nelson Shore, it's...
This is one down from Fuller, two down from Fuller Shore.
Two back.
Closer to Town Hall.
Town Hall, and it's after...
Roberts, there's a Roberts Lane, Fuller Shore, Roberts, and then this one, I think.
Nelson, right, and then Cashmere.
Yeah.
Yeah, Priscilla.
That's, that's, that's a high-speed road, so you have to hold, the fence has to be held back. And...
Do you want to make a comment to send to the zoning board of appeals?
Yeah.
That, go ahead. Do you want to make it? You want me to make it? How about we feel that the zoning board of appeals should take into consideration the, the site distances along Bedford Street?
Visual impairment.
What?
Traffic visual impairment.
Yeah, but this, the, the site distances is what is called for in the, by Mass Highway.
Yep.
And there should be enough setbacks so people can pull out onto Bedford Street without causing problems. Does that work?
Yeah.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three is to approve meeting minutes.
I've read them, Brian, and make a motion to approve.
You're going to...
Happen from the less busy...
Nice.
I guess people that are on Nelson Shore, they're looking at them right floating in the pool.
You could put it in the front yard.
Someone likes a second.
I made a motion to approve the minutes from January 24th.
Yep.
I don't think Peter was there, so we need probably Zink to second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
And?
Okay.
And I as well, that's okay.
Were you not there?
He wasn't there.
I wasn't on the board at that point.
Oh, okay, good. Yep. You were there?
Not for the first one, not January 24th, I wasn't. I'm trying to think where I was.
Well, you voted to...
You know what was that, when the tree, when the tree fell?
There's another set of meeting minutes here.
There's a, is that? No, right here. Barbara made a motion, seconded by Janice, to approve the meeting minutes, and you, Barbara, Zink, and me all voted aye, and Janice abstained. So you won, but you can abstain.
I'm just trying to remember.
What's that?
I'm going to mess that up.
All right.
Okay.
Sometimes we just copy and paste.
Yeah, we only had this, we only had one meeting on this, on this, on this one for in Millennial Circle, right? And I remembered, I was there.
So we have to amend it, so let's retract that last vote, because we have to make that change and delete out that he was absent on the file, and then we can approve. Good?
Okay.
Right?
Motion, I mean, you want to change that?
Yep.
Second?
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
That was for the amendment.
That was just to indicate that Peter was here that night.
Okay, no, you're not, no, you want to make a motion that we approve the... Sonny?
Did he end the meeting? Yeah, I did, but she has to make that amendment.
Oh, okay.
And then, and then they'll prove.
Now you can...
Well, I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
I know, this, I, it's fun reading the Housing, Lakeville Tunnel of Lakeville Housing Production Plan.
You're still reading it?
I had so much, but I, you know what, I had to read it again. I've actually read it three or four times, and there are some very interesting things in here. If you guys haven't read it, really, it's, it's really interesting. One of the things that struck me that I wanted to bring to your attention was, I don't know if you guys know the answer to this, but when Kensington Court was approved, it was supposed to have had a certain number of affordable units, and there was an issue with that one that got finished up and DHCD didn't necessarily count them. In this housing production plan, it indicates that they, if we were, if they were to count those, as they, as they should, we would have 111 more units. Is that right? So that would leave us with, as of right now, I think, like 12 more units that would need to be built. So I didn't know if anybody knew the answer to that question, if that had ever been answered.
Which question?
If DHCD has made a ruling on Kensington.
I don't know about DHCD.
They've made a ruling on the second set of apartments, let's, can you tell me again which, which one's...
Uh...
The first set that got built on the right-hand side as you're driving in, which one are they named?
I thought that was Kensington Court, because that was the first one that went in.
Okay, the first one, the first one that went in is completely counted on the...
On the plan?
On, for us, through the town.
Okay.
They are all rental units, and 100% of them count toward our housing production plan.
Affordable.
Affordable.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the ones on the left.
Yes.
None of them count at all, and they've been the ones that were, that were in contention for years.
Right.
And the final, and I have, and I have copies of all that stuff.
So what was the final conclusion? They said, they said no.
Zero, you can, no, they said no. This, this is one that, the, is that on? Are we still, we're still on the meeting?
Still going, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it, for years, it was several years, you know, getting the final thing, but that, that's not unusual with the 40B-type ones, because when, when you're through with the entire project, then they check to see how the affordable went, and then they apply the rules, even if it's 15 years later, they apply whatever rules they have at the time to what went backwards, and, and often you lose some that you thought you'd have for your affordable housing count. And on that one, all of them were lost on the left-hand side, and all of them, because all of them were, on, on the right-hand side, all of them are affordable.
Yeah, because they did total on one side, but not the other side. Because the market was such that they wanted to have the second set all market rate, right?
But that isn't how the approval was issued by the town, when the town intended to agree with it.
No, no, not at all, not at all.
They probably amended it, that had to do with the selectmen, not us.
Right, right, I just was curious, because this, this, when this was published in December of 17, that question was out, still outstanding.
Well, what, right.
So I just was wondering if any, and you clearly know, because now the answer is no, that it's done.
And I have, and I have copies of all this stuff to show you.
Okay.
And, and the state went to, this wasn't just a form letter they sent out, they did a lot of legal research.
I almost might, I might be nerdy enough someday to want to actually look at that, anyway, because it just bugs me.
If you enjoy stuff like this, you're going to love that one.
Right, it's similar to what happened down at, at La Barron Hills.
Yeah, same.
Yes, which is another thorn in my side, didn't I think about it? There's nothing you can do now.
It's an identical thorn, no, as a matter of fact, that one isn't done yet. They're still building.
They are still building.
And they have a large count to get up to.
Yeah.
And until they get to the count, until they finish the last unit, they don't really do the, how do you say?
Audit.
They, they don't do the audit, yeah, they don't audit it until you're done with that number, even if it took you 25 years to do it.
That's so crazy, why would that be the case?
Oh, is that crazy? But that's the way it is.
That doesn't make any sense at all.
It's probably DHCD.
Yes, that's DHCD, and they do it.
Clearly, right, because they're the ones that do the audit.
And so a lot of people...
But their rules would say they wouldn't do it till the end, when it's done being built.
A lot of people have said that it looks like, well, when you do this, like you take a individual building and you create a, you know, 100, you know, if you take 100% of any given thing, and then right next to it, 100% not affordable, or stuff like that, that eventually you're going to be called on it and you won't get credit. But you don't get called on it...
Until it's over.
Until 10 years later?
Right.
By that time, you've made your money and you're gone.
Or 20 years later.
Is what happens, but, but that's...
You know, the deeds are written.
But, but, but that's a state, that's like a state policy, that, that's the way it goes, and they, and, and everyone knows it. Well, not everyone.
There's a whole bunch of things on this plan that say Planning Board, in case anybody was interested.
What?
They say Planning Board, and this is the outreach, Lakeville Housing Production Strategy and Action Plan, and it has Board of Select, it has Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, ZVA, HT must be Housing Trust, is that the Housing Board?
Housing Trust, I, I have been mentioning that, almost any, almost any town would do a Housing Trust, because it's important, you know, as, as you get a population that's aging, that you do some of the simple stuff, and, and, you know, some of the simple, you know, housing for the elderly isn't complicated, but it has to be done by a group of people who, you know, it's eventually an important job, we don't have anyone doing it.
It's like Housing Authority.
Yeah.
Middleborough's doing ours right now, right?
Middleborough's doing ours right now, yes. And they charge us. You know, it, it's, it's a job that, that takes time, and it takes money, and, you know, hours of work, and they, they charge us for that.
It's a lot of hours of work.
Yeah, it, it's, it's difficult, you know, it's, they're moving people, it's a lot of people, and they, that you have to talk to and...
Well, thanks for letting me ask the questions, anyway.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
What's that?
I just have a bill for you to review.
Oh, absolutely. Sorry, Barbara, you superseded. Can I just sign this, or do we all have to? We all used to.
I forget, what, yeah?
We all used to.
I think you said you all wanted to sign it.
Yeah, there's a bill here for South Coast Media Group to, for the sum of $235 for postings in Middleborough Gazette. Entertainer motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathy, can we, will this expense show up for next year's budget? Because we didn't have this much in our budget.
No, town pays for it.
Town pays for that, because it's part of the notice.
Yeah.
Well, that's going to be like your decision, either that can come from your, can come from your budget, from the fees that you take in, or like you had mentioned before, if you want to stop tracking it, instead of a line item for the whole... if you want to stop tracking it, you can set up a line item for the home, basically you can do it that way as well.
Was this just for our meetings?
Yeah. That was for, no, that was for the public hearings.
Can we bill some of that back? I'm sure we could.
What's that?
To who?
To marijuana, those on marijuana, wasn't it?
No.
No, these were, these were before that?
The zoning ones.
The zoning changes.
These are the zoning ones, so that's just our expense.
We can bill late.
And, and we're also allowed to go over a budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you, do you need to sign it?
Oh, okay.
Did you want all of us to sign it?
Yeah. That's what, where we used to do it in the old days.
Yeah, at least three, right? At least three to be a forum to sign it, would be the minimum.
Back in the old days, you just pass it around.
You want to get it?
Motion to adjourn? Sorry.
John left at bedtime, huh?
Second, anyone second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.